The agenda is approval of the meeting minutes. Is there someone that would like to move the minutes from our city council meeting on November 27th?
I'm over there.
Jamie, thank you.
My second.
Thank you, Sinam. Jamie, any comments or thoughts?
I had two small ones on page three under the bullet Dexter Tonto President Sally Cope. In the second to last line of that, Cope stated her concerns about the P V's affect on the surrounding area should be affected. And on page four, I just noted that we don't actually have an address for Nate Pound. It just says non-resident. I don't know if we tried to get an address, but it's required that we have an address. Just noting that we don't have one. I know he did not provide one.
Yeah, I don't have a current address for him. Last one I have is 150 Jeffords.
Do we need that? Are we supposed to have it?
Yeah, we can, we can get it, I'm sure.
Okay.
It's a good, it's a good point. The last, the last name of Nancy, the last person who spoke is Opila. O P I E L A. I don't have mine called up, but it's, I think it was.
Oh, just below that.
Yeah, the one below Nate. Okay, anything else, Jamie?
That's all.
Okay. So now Nathan, well, they're council members? Okay, so we're gonna try to approve the minutes with those questions and ask staffer Michelle maybe to reach out to Nate to try and get his address just to get it into the record. If I can help you, if not, I'm sure I can reach him. Okay, please call the vote to approve the meetings.
Semi Faro?
Yes.
Michelle's?
Yes.
Alda?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Kio?
Yes. Motion carries, thank you. We have no pre-arranged participation this evening, so we're down to non-arranged participation. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak this evening? They're not arranged. Yes, sir. Welcome. Yeah, just name an address, Dave, to start off with, please.
Good evening, I'm Dave Lawton, speaking on behalf of Baker Road Land Holdings and the annexation application. Tom Colbert with Midwestern Consulting is here with me as well, and we're here to talk about several things. First, the discussion of the annexation request that is in the unfinished business section of the agenda. Two, we will also speak to multiple persons semi far off request regarding public input. The annexation under new business. We request, number three, we rest a request of clarification as to the rationale and source of the item listed in section P dedicating the existing Dexter Process Studies to eliminate access. That's section P in tonight's agenda. And fourth, I will offer a clarification of my position regarding further studies as described in the memorandum on page 41 of your packet. I am hopeful that together we can make progress on a process of evaluating the annexation request. Seven months after making the request, my team hasn't heard a council discussion on whether the annexation has merit or strategic value for Dexter. There hasn't been a discussion or council reaction to the many benefits connected to the project. The exception to that statement isn't, is the benefit regarding the new municipal well. But even that feedback has been very recent and very much individually driven by council. More on the well later. We want desperately to hear discussions regarding the merits and the benefits of this proposal. I spoke in October about using the next three months efficiently to make progress toward an annexation decision. November has now passed. For me, there's a logical order to the tasks at hand. First, this is capitalized in my write-up, is the completion of the city's utility studies. Since summer, we were told end of November, excuse me, end of October. On Friday, Tom Colbert told me that now Michelle annuals' estimates are for completion of the sewer study at the end of January and completion of the water study by spring or summer 24. This is unsatisfactory. I urge the city to get us information much sooner. Even preliminary information with necessary caveats. We need something to work. As an aside, I will remind you that the 2017 Sloan Kingsley Annexation Request for a much larger residential project died due to the estimated costs of increasing the utility systems respective capacities. We needed information. I said that I would clarify my position on further studies. What was written in the committee's memorandum does not reflect my position accurately. It was taken from a phone conversation, and I apologize if I wasn't clear. In that conversation, I said that we would do additional well exploration. Brilliant. But I also questioned the wisdom of spending money for that or traffic studies or natural feature studies or transportation infrastructure studies until we understand the results of the city's utility studies. Again, there's a logical order. But if we can make progress tonight and in the near future toward the terms of a process to get you the answers you need, make an informed annexation decision, then we will begin the well exploration on the site right away. There's nothing like filling wells in the wintertime. We'll get after it. And we will include Eagle, the state agency, in the process. You had a number of sample motions in your packet. My advice is to take your time on motions, but if you feel the need to pass one, please make it the conditional one to the list of tasks and the information you are seeking. Regarding the request to schedule public input on the annexation, we strongly believe it would be premature. Neither the city nor I has enough information to provide to the public, let alone enough to answer questions with any specificity. Let's not activate the public's propensity for rumors or rumors without getting, without first getting some answers. It would be a great distraction for you and the public, and it would potentially delay the work getting done. Let's do the work and then present the best information available to the public. Lastly, we are also opposed to our exclusion from any interactions during a public input session, but we can discuss that later when you create the format for such a meeting. Thank you for your attention to my remarks. I will pass out the conference.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions? Is there anyone else who would like to speak this evening in the audience? Is there anyone online that would like to speak under non-arranged this evening? If so, could you please use the raise hand feature?
I can immediately look back here and see.
Okay, seeing, thank you. Seeing none at this time, we'll continue down the agenda. We'll conclude the non-arranged participation portion of the agenda and move down to item F, which is Declaration of Any Conflicts of Interest. Does anybody have any declarations to make this evening? Zach?
Well, to get to the record, I did have a survey conducted in my company by the company that Mr. Probert works for back in the fall, regular rate. I was involved in the early stages of the group that submitted the petition that we're looking on. But again, for the record, it's confirmed by our council that that was a protected political activity that's excluded from our conflict of interest, but wanted folks to know.
Yep, very good. Anyone else? Jamie?
I guess in that vein, I'll just echo what Zach said, the second part of his statement that I too was part of the origination of that ballot proposal committee.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, well, we're down to item G on page two of the agenda for approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I'm going to approve the agenda.
Moved by Griffin. Thank you, Jamie.
A second.
I'll dig. And Sinam?
Could we potentially, and I should have a step in, but combine the discussion of the L1 Sloan Kingsley update with M1? The input session?
Yep, we can do that. We can do M1 right after or together. I'm going to do it. Okay, so M1 is going to be moved up in between L1 and 2. Does that sound okay to everybody? Jamie, you're the maker of the, okay.
So we'll have one discussion item and then a second. It's consideration.
Yes. Number A and B, so to speak, coming. Okay, any other comments on the agenda? Okay, please call the vote to approve the agenda as modified.
Alda?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Michelle's?
Yes.
Semi Faro?
Yes.
Kio?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you. Now, we have no public hearings this evening, so we're down to I, which is Communications. We have our upcoming meeting list in the packet. Is there any comments on the meeting list that's there? Seeing none, I'll keep moving. Our first report this evening is from our Public Services Superintendent. Welcome, Tim. How are you?
Good, yourself?
Good.
Well, obviously, two weeks before some for you, a couple of things afterwards, but I think questions right now.
Jamie, go ahead.
I meant to check on the way in the lights on Lexington.
I had to double-check with Kurt, but I think he said they were on the other day when we talked.
They might, I just didn't, okay.
Because he said he went there in the morning, so I can pick it up and see.
Thanks.
Zach?
I've got some other lights, light questions I've noticed a couple of times on Baker Road in front of Mug and Bobs. There are three lights that are consistently out, including one that has a shattered globe. It's on our list.
That's theirs.
That's theirs.
Look at, because we had this discussion about this, because we all thought it was, if you look at it, it's, it's theirs that they put in. It's not between the road and sidewalks, between their parking lot and the sidewalk. And when I was talking with Kurt about it, it is theirs unless something's changed.
I think they're approved as part of the site plan.
So it'd be code enforcement to issue then?
Yeah.
Yeah, we can follow up on that. How many did you say is out there?
Three with, one with the smashed globe.
Okay.
Or missing globe.
Gotcha. Other questions for Tim? Laura, still yours, sir?
Um, a couple of different things. We started a new DPW work today, another one we started on Wednesday.
Great.
Lead pickup wrapped up last week. Sounds like everything's going good with that. Or what good, as I should say. The roundabouts sidewalks that did top its schools. So are you talking ones that are on Danoy or are you talking ones that are on Shield?
I think Zach, is that any question about, about Snow, Snowbound? You were asking, I think, about clearing roundabouts the last meeting, maybe.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's the, the cross, the crosswalks in the middle of them. I consistently see them not cleaned off, the little island in the middle.
Sure, then, what are you talking about? There's one that's, goes across walk right there at Danoy.
I, 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 if you're walking the, the pedestrian piece of it.
Okay.
That's what he's talking about.
There's one north of the roundabout, north of Danoy.
Yeah, let me, let me.
Crosses Baker.
Yeah.
And then there's obviously the.
One that, that one that's north of Baker that's in the road, that's tools. I did talk to them about that, and I also talked to the one at the roundabout itself, like right before, there's been a cemetery in Danoy. There's one there, and that's their responsibility to talk to them about it. He says he'll get on it. He thought those guys were on, according to them, they were. The one in Shield is, that's, that's not ours. So that would be, I mean, I called the pound and we'll see if they would bring some. I don't know if they would. That's the only thing. So, but I will make a phone call into them.
Okay.
And then the ice cream one up there, nobody's seen that, so. Obviously, I'm not afraid of them, but they'll get the colder while they're here and get it frozen.
Very nice. Any other questions? It's Tim on Nathan. Thank you for your work on your report. Appreciate it. Next up is our Community Development Manager. Michelle, how are you?
I'm fine. I was council today.
Good.
Excellent. Okay, you've got my report in front of you before I give your, give you the couple of updates. Do you have any questions for me?
Can you talk a little bit about planning commission comments?
Yes, we planned on doing that, but thank you for asking.
Yes, please.
So, so that everybody understands, in your packet, you've got, obviously, the text kind of explaining what planning commission's input was regarding the design. They, they did not feel it had the quality of design. We're not talking materials, like the materials, brick, stone, that's not a problem. It's, they thought it looked like a very poor industrial building and did not reflect well on downtown. They recognize this is a building that is there for the next 50 to 100 years and needs to have a certain amount of je ne sais quoi, if nothing else. The, they talked about the quality of the architectural design, the, the elevations of the metal view site. It's not that they're looking for exactly that to be transplanted on the site. But what I tried to provide you with in the, in the packet was a visual as to how the materials together could bring that quality of design that they're looking for. Whether it's a pitch groove or whether it's a flat roof with armpit walls. Those circular design elements, Councilman Michelle probably knows the, the proper name for those features. Those add interest to the building. The, the stone at the top of the piers separating each of the bays along with the trim, whether it's a cornice or, like I said, a armpit wall. The red accents for the, for the overhead doors for each of those bays. All of that together provides a look for Main Street that says it's got a proper presence on Main Street, even though around corner is where you're actually going to have the entrance of the building. They would want that entrance to have that same quality of design. So I hope that, that I was able to communicate that to you with the text and the visuals. The information has been sent to David and Sam, and I presume at our next facilities meeting, if nowhere else, we will at least have some conversation again.
So, so you sent them what you just described to us?
I sent them exactly the same thing.
Exactly the same thing, okay. Okay, maybe we could encourage them to watch this planning commission meeting.
I'm kidding. I'm happy to give them that video, but they're not going to see it. It's, it's pretty brutal, Sean. So I tried to take out the emotion and just stick with the
Gotcha.
The stuff that could be out, you know, let's put it that way.
Gotcha, okay.
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 Any other questions regarding that?
You mean they weren't the usual taxful selves?
Most were, some were a little more.
What?
Yes, that's a good word, word.
Okay, all right, okay, okay. So I think it's important to, to get it to their architect, because they want that, we want that feedback, so.
Yep, absolutely, and I did hear back from Sam, so I know that they have it, but, you know, we will talk about it. One of our companies, Photosystems, they're out at 7190 here on River Drive. They have a, there's a write-up in Prains back from December. I learned of it today. They have a licensing deal with Kodak. They used to be solely with a company out of China. Excuse me, and now they are going to be the one handling all of it for Kodak. So it, it's, it's another, excuse me, it's a nice feather in Photosystems cap, and one of the things that Ann Arber, Smurf and I are working on is setting up a business retention call. We have not met with them since just before COVID, so this is a good opportunity to reconnect and, and find out more about this and congratulate them. That's a good feeling for them. Excuse me, I'm just sorry.
How many employees do they have, do you know?
I don't, and that's one of the things that we need to find out. This might bring more employees there.
We're good. Questions from Michelle?
Uh, one last thing. We did have a presentation, Grace, Ryan, our intern, and myself were, went to the meeting with the schools, the students on their presentation on urban design. It was very, very interesting. This is almost going to be a two-part exercise for them. Their first part was to determine whether planning was actually a science. They call it the human science. Most of us know what it is. It's a circle science, the soft sciences. Engineering, physics, chemistry, those are considered the hard sciences. Excuse me. So they had to figure out, was it a science, and if so, how would you tackle that? And so that's how they came up, it's a very high-level look at how you would plan out a city. We had followed up with some, with some information for them so that they can start to do more research, do it from the data-driven approach, like we do with master plans, your demographics. You look at land use patterns, et cetera. They'll do a deeper dive, then they change some of their, what their communities would look like, and, and then there'll be a follow-up after that. So I'm looking forward to seeing how that will work.
Great. Zach?
Next, if they're going to ask us, please ask for like a week's notice ahead of time. I had actual urban planning meetings that are impossible to rearrange with a day's notice.
I'll make sure they know. Thank you.
Okay, are there any comments related to any of the board's commissioner reports listed under J3? As I jumped on the agenda? Hey, not seeing any, we'll move to the city manager report, Justin.
Sure, so, uh, update number one is, as you can see, the cabling company that worked on the council chamber is substantially complete. You know, we have the new televisions up and running. We have our microphones on the tables. We have speakers up top. Just as a little primer for the microphones on the table. For most of you, except for Joe, if you tap where it says push, it'll turn the microphone off, and then if you tap it again, it'll turn it back on. But it's, everything is auto-mixed, so it'll accept the input from all of the microphones at once, mix it and send it out to Zoom, and also to the speakers up top. So hopefully, everybody can hear everybody a little bit better now. And folks online can hopefully hear us a little bit better as well, with a little bit more consistency.
That's an improvement.
Hey, good work.
The, the other thing that we, that we learned over the last couple, a couple of weeks is Zoom has a closed caption feature, and so we've turned that on, and anybody who's online, or if there are folks in the audience who wish to have it, we can enable it for these TVs, but folks at home can enable it for just themselves, just by hitting the button at the bottom.
Nice.
The other kind of big update, Tim already beat me to it, but we did hire two new DPW employees. We did talk to Kurt, and Kurt is expecting to retire in April. So rather than go through a hiring process now and then another hiring process in April, we had several really good candidates this time around, and so we went ahead and brought two people on board that way we can get, give them some time with Kurt to get them trained up and ready to go before, for his exit. But one, Dustin, started today, and Jared will be starting on Wednesday. So we're excited to have, have them on board.
So that brings us to how many now?
Right now, we're at six.
At six, plus one.
Yeah, and so once, once Kurt goes, we'll be back down to five.
Okay.
Outside of that, does anybody have any questions on my report?
And what, what did we start them in? What, DPW one for me?
Uh, so, so one started at DPW one, one started at DPW three.
Okay, based upon experience?
Mm-hmm.
Great. Very good. Questions for Justin? Okay. Keep moving down the agenda. A little bit, I want to just point out that Justin had a preliminary schedule attached to his report on the fire station. And if you don't mind, I'd like to stare at it a little bit. Either under my report or ask maybe you and Joe and Sinam have been part of it to help me here. There's, I don't know how many people have had a chance to go through this, but we are in the schematic design stage, which is the top of that page 28 of our packet. And there's going to be, as I understand it, some significant information coming to us for the meeting on the 27th. And the, the information that's coming is supposed to be an updated cost estimate of the new design. Okay, now you might say, what's the new design? And I had to go back and think about this a little bit, and I actually talked to David and Samuel about this, but they've, they've taken the, they took the council action that we had back in September, October, where we said five bays up top and potentially two bays down at the park level. Uh, they took the direction that we're relocating the sheriff department to someplace other than there. Uh, and they're getting rid of the retaining wall that's, do you remember there was an extensive retaining wall described that would be along the driveway down along the fire station? And they're, and they've revised the footprint slightly to reflect the five bays up above, the two down below, and the less square footage overall as a result of moving the sheriff out of there. I couldn't remember what the cost of some of those items were, so I went back and looked, and, you know, they gave us a a $9.3 million budget to build the six-bay, no basement option up there. And I think they had about $1.8 million total in additional costs for putting bays down below, plus adding the stairway and elevator, and the bathrooms down over there, so. If you, if you add the 1.8 to the 9.3 or 4, you get to 11.1. Obviously, our budget so far is 9.4 is what we've established, the 8.4 from the bond and the 1 million from reserves that we've dedicated or assigned to this project. It remains to be seen what kind of reduction they get from removing that six-bay and eliminating the retaining wall and having less overall square footage. It sounds to me like the square footage has been reduced from almost 17,000 square feet. I don't understand any of the numbers, right, 16,900 to something in the 14,000, it's 14.6. So there's at least 10 or 10 to 15% reduction in square footage, you know, there that'll have some effect, but they are, they have a schedule shown here that puts us, if you scroll all the way to the bottom, down to breaking ground in July. If we can make a decision on whether we want the bays at park level, you'll notice that on this schedule, the last line under schematic design is a February 12th date, it's a red dot. The red dot says February 12th, determine if park level bays are included. If we could make that decision at the end of December, we can cut a month or more off the schedule. Is what I, you were part of that meeting, is what I heard David and Samuel saying. So I just wanted to make everyone aware that that information is supposed to be coming, and hopefully it's good enough that we can, we can make a decision like that. I've asked Justin to look at our current additional reserves to see how much we have and what we could allocate towards, you know, that vision of the, of the project should we decide to do it. So the, I know sometimes we try to have a light council agenda. I anticipate that being a solid item on the 27th. Did I say anything incorrect there or inconsistent with what we heard?
Nope, that's, that's what we heard.
So I'm hoping that there will be a potential revised schedule if, that could be put together to show how that we would improve if we had made that decision on the 27th. The other decision that they've asked us to make, and I don't know, I might leave council's recollection of what we've done. Sanam, I believe when we, when we made the motion on the fire station, you had made the motion that we remove the sheriffs from the 8140 site and have evaluations on where else we could put the sheriffs. But I don't think there's really many more options other than here that are even, have even been floated out there. And I know we received at one point in time, I couldn't find it. We received some preliminary feedback from the sheriff department that they liked this facility. I don't remember what meeting that was at. But if that's the long-term direction, I think the temporary design that they're doing would benefit from them knowing that ultimately sheriffs are gonna be here. So we may could ask to firm that decision up on the 27th too, if it's truly the decision we want to make. So I just want to give everybody a heads up. Those two questions, consideration items are gonna likely be in front of us on the 27th of December. And you firmed up that our meeting is on Wednesday, the 27th?
That's correct.
So that's our, that's our next meeting. The other thing that they're gonna look to try and do as fast as they can is get the, I wanna call your attention to the highlighted rows, I guess, is the word I'm looking for, under schematic design. And one of them says electrical generator and switchgear early release. During the discussion, the brief discussion of this agenda, I heard them say that that's a potential nine-to-12-month package to get that switched gear. So it it behooves us as early as we can get that moved up so that they can get that ordered, those long lead items. We'll likely have to make those decisions prior to final schematic design approval, if you will. Give you a heads up on things that I think are coming, coming forward. Does anybody have any questions on this? Does anybody take the time to look at this at all?
I looked at it and I did not have questions.
Okay, great, great. Just wanna make sure everybody saw it there. I was, I was happy to see it because I was worried we hadn't seen it scheduled. So I think we, I realize it's the first one and we can work from this and, you know, go from there. But it's always good to have a schedule and know what you're aiming at.
Yeah, if I may, I, sure, we had in the committee had, here and there, points of it were mentioned to us, but it was nice to see it in this packet as a schedule in this format.
And then scrolling down to my, my written report, I don't have anything to comment about what's already been written, but today we received, we being Justin, Michelle and I, received an invitation from Dr. Timas at the school district to have a meeting to talk about the senior and community center project. They didn't get into any more details than that, but asked if they could meet with us next week, and I think, I think we're thinking either the 19th or the 20th were the dates that, anyway, it doesn't matter, middle of next week, but that's not on my report and that just came up today and I wanted council to be aware of it. Since we don't meet until after Christmas, I'd also like to wish everybody Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays. We should all be smiling. It's a good season, huh? Got a lot of good things going on, a lot of good families. Everybody looking for time off, school breaks, all those things. Yeah, I know. All good. You could, you could always keep reading and keep studying. It's good. Okay, I'll, I'll keep going. Does anybody have any questions for me? Jamie?
Yeah, so I guess just like a process question.
Sure.
Regarding your meeting on the 6th with Justin and Partners in Architecture and Cunningham Land.
Yep.
That was not a subcommittee meeting.
It was not.
So I guess does it say somewhere why that sort of a meeting is permitted?
Well, I asked if I could understand what the schedule was, and the best way for Justin to answer that question was to pull the architect and Cunningham Land into a Zoom meeting.
So is any council member able to do that? Is that, or is that like mayoral privilege? I mean, I'm like, it's a legitimate question. I'm trying to understand who's able to talk to who, when.
I don't know where that's all written down, Jamie.
So would an individual council member, if they reached out to Justin, said, I want to understand this document, the likelihood, Justin, I guess, that you would invite us into a meeting?
If, if you wanna set up a one-on-one with the architect and the construction manager, I can do my best to coordinate that.
And like, does that go, like a developer comes with a proposal? Am I able to meet with Dave Lawton and you on my own?
I mean, I, I think, you know, any resident has the ability to meet with, with developers. I mean, I don't see why individual members of council would be any different.
Jamie, the other thing, and I don't know if it's written down or not anywhere, but, you know, I like to know, I like to know what's going on in terms of process and expectation for future meetings. And I was hoping that all of this stuff was gonna be on the December 11th meeting, meeting tonight's agenda. Because typically we prefer not to do a whole lot on the 27th, like to get people back to their families in the holidays. And in talking to Justin, he said, well, it looks like they're targeting the 27th. And I, that's when I said, well, you know, when are we submitting permits for temporary work, you know, here? And when does the floodplain permit gonna go in? How are we doing on the final cost estimate? And he didn't have a schedule. So I said, well, could you tell them that I'd like to understand what the schedule is? I don't want to come to the meeting and not be prepared with that. So he sent off an email to them and said, hey, Sean, I'd like to know, you know, what kind of schedule we're working off of. And this, this document that's in the packet was conveyed to me on the 6th. And I made sure that Justin included it in the packet because I think it's important.
Okay.
So I and I, you know.
I mean, I appreciate that you shared.
Yeah, any meeting I do, I'm, I'm gonna tell, tell you guys, you know, what those are, so. And we'll, we'll report back on what that meeting at the school is, was on the 19th or the 20th, whatever it is, that that got formalized. The last thing I want to mention is, and I don't have it in my report, but I'll try to get it in there next time. We're coming around to the, the new year, 2024, where we typically start our goal-setting process. I know everybody loves the goal-setting process. Maybe not as much as I do, but I'm going to be proposing some dates. Typically start that in February with one and then maybe March. So we'll be working with Justin to get those dates out there so that we can get a meeting scheduled for that.
And also prior to COVID, we used to do an all committees meeting. Is that something that council would like to get back to? It was an all committees meeting, so, so we would invite planning and parks and ACH, and invite everyone to the, to the same meeting, you know, post the notice and hold that jointly with, with council. Then I want to see if that was something that council was interested in getting back to.
I personally really enjoyed it. It gave a chance to, you know, sometimes we see names and just being able to have conversations and say hi and build, know who is working on, in all of these things.
Maybe you can look at a date for us, do it still on that before, please?
Yeah, usually we try, we try and do it alongside.
Monday or something?
Like, yeah, typically we try and have it on like the fifth Monday, but we try and do it in coordination with goals and objectives.
Yeah, yeah, okay, good.
I said one comment on that.
Sure, please.
So I, I think I've heard feedback that some people didn't think it was the most effective meeting, that it was just kind of the board and committee is giving like an update as to like where they were, and so maybe it wasn't as productive as it could have been. So I guess if there are ways to consider if there's like a very specific topic, where having everybody in the same room to talk about that topic at the same time would make the best use of their time. In addition to perhaps, you know, the individual updates. I guess maybe we could give some thought to that.
Okay, sure. Okay, that concludes my report. Are there any councilman reports verbal anyways? Okay, we're down to the consent agenda. There are three items on the consent agenda. We don't have why, so I need somebody, Joe.
I mean, we approved consent agenda, including consideration of bills and payroll in the amount of $179,871.31. 2024 awards and committee meeting calendar and committee appointments.
Nice section.
Moved by Sarah Farrow, second by Aldag. Thank you both. Or do please call the vote to approve the consent agenda when you have a second or have a chance.
Griffin?
Yes.
Michelle's?
Yes.
Aldag?
Yes.
Sammy Farrow?
Yes.
Heo?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you. We're down to the unfinished portion of our business. L1 is the discussion of the Sloan Kingsley project or update there, and we've paired that to follow with M1, which was the consideration of setting a public hearing, a public input session for that project. Who would like to begin? We postponed this from last meeting, if you recall. There's a lot of information in the November 27th packet also.
And I hope everyone's okay with us not.
Yeah, that's okay.
Bringing the 100 pages forward.
Yeah, I thought there was only half a packet when I saw 70 pages. I was like, oh.
Do, do you want Michelle to give a primer?
Sure, if she'd like to, that'd be great. What were we prepared to do last meeting? Okay, so, so remind me, what, what action did SIO take?
SIO adapted a resolution basically stating that they were not going to engage in any more discussions about the annexation until the city provided some formal communication, if you will, whether they, they were gonna go forward with it.
Okay. All right, so the applicant, Dave Mr. Lawton, was here today, asked us to think about, you know, process and early process. So he expressed, or made a comment about the, the dates of the two utility studies. So why don't we start there for a second because I think the applicant's waiting on that information and council is also since we're the one that agreed to have it done, right? So remind me what, what that update is?
Yeah, so, so, so there's, there's two utility studies going on.
Okay.
One is a wastewater capacity study. And one is kind of the, the water master plan study that, that's required every five years. So neither of the, the studies were necessarily specific to this development. The idea was to get the broader picture on proposed developments, known developments, potential future developments, and how all of those collectively have the potential to impact the wastewater and water system. We know that F&amp;V has, has been moving forward, and they're likely to have theirs done in the next couple of weeks.
So F&amp;V is doing the wastewater?
F&amp;V is doing, doing the wastewater side.
Okay.
They are, they, I spoke with Elaine last week. She will have the draft this week to staff. That could be by the end of the week. She didn't have a specific date, but it would come this week.
Okay.
Or staffing, but they do refinements. And she expected that that meant that it would be either your first or second meeting in January if you're planning as an agent.
Okay. And what is staff's plan to, when do you get the draft?
So I, I think our, our plan would be to review it in-house with, with our utility staff, make sure that it, it meets our expectations as far as what information is being provided. And then bring that forward to council for adoption.
Now, what, what does adoption mean?
Need to accept the information as provided?
We're receiving it.
Any suggested recommendations that may be actionable?
Is it like an asset management plan?
Not, not specifically. It, it doesn't deal necessarily with specific pieces of, of infrastructure. It's more here, here is where your different measurement levels are at. So here, here's where your BODs are. Here's where your total treatment capacity is, phosphorus, et cetera, et cetera. And here is what one RU has the potential to do to that. And then multiply that times 20 for this development, 30 for that development. And here, here is where we estimate your maximum capacity for each of those items is currently. And if you want to exceed that, then there will be necessary infrastructure upgrades.
Okay, so if, if, if that report shows that we're gonna exceed anything within the projected growth in the community, then those would translate to future CIP items?
Correct.
Like an asset management plan?
Correct. The, the, the more, the, the capital piece of it was more addressed with our SAAS study. As far as like the,
That was five years ago.
Which, which was five years ago.
Okay. Is it gonna update that a little bit or?
That, that, that wasn't part of the.
Not part of this.
Not part of this.
Trying to understand what we're adopting.
Okay, yep. So then on the water side, OHM is working on that study.
So that's a water liability study in general plan?
Correct, correct, yep. And so that, that's also, that's required to be updated every five years and then submitted to Eagle. Our due date to have it to Eagle was or is July 2024. So when OHM proposed their timeline, that was kind of their, their maximum due date was July 2024. We have talked with Marcus and said, you know, that's, we, we need it much sooner than that. And we're waiting on feedback from Marcus and his team as to when, the soonest they can, they can be done with that is, or as soon as they can have a, have an initial draft.
Okay, so they haven't promised a draft yet?
Correct. They, well, they, they, they haven't, they haven't given us their soonest date. So we, we, we know their maximum date, but.
Jamie, is that it?
Sure, I'll be finished with your thought.
Yeah, go ahead. Yep.
So in our packet from our last meeting and then all citing our master plan, it says, "From time to time and under mutual consent between the city of Dexter and adjacent townships, the municipal boundaries of the city may expand." And then included in our last packet was the resolution by Saturday where they say "The proposed annexation request does not promote or meet township goals of open space preservation and pathways." I mean, my read of that is, this is not a mutually beneficial annexation request. And I suppose it's possible they could have passed this resolution saying it doesn't promote their goals and maybe still consent to an annexation. I guess maybe I would seek clarification from them. My read of the resolution, at least the first time around, was, well, our master plan says we'll do this, it's mutually beneficial. They're saying it's not. So I guess I think there needs So I guess I think there needs to be a discussion as to whether or not we are going to consider how our master plan is worded or if you interpret that somewhat differently.
Yeah, I know. I think the master plan is a good point. I mean, they have a master plan that shows high density on that property.
Eight units per acre.
What's that?
Your master plan calls for eight units per acre in Baker Gateway.
Right, gateway, that was the word. Thank you. Well, I like that we've established a relationship or discussion with them. I think that's important. Somehow I think that needs to continue. But I am, I think the most important question for me in this is the water and wastewater capacity. And I, you know, I'm interested in getting that information so that we're not making a decision prematurely or without the information we should have in front of us. My gut tells me that we have capacity of both, both. But that's just my gut. And I don't want to make the wrong decision necessarily there.
And
Get that button out.
And that may be true now. The question is, what do we have the capacity for? Once you add in Millennium Place and a couple of the other PUDs that are coming through, potential for thirty forty five broad. If those are the priority, those will increase our service level, pushing us closer to whatever our maximum capacity is for water and sewer. And so what will be interesting to see is where we fall with those proposed developments compared to where we're at today.
Well, I know it's not a perfect formula to give to an answer here. You know, we've gone around the table before. I like the opportunity to add houses and people to the community. I'm not particularly tied to a specific housing type. I think there's multiple ways that can be done well. You know, the item that's on the agenda or as a future potential item, what we call a proposed item, the you know, dedicating the Dexter Crossings to eliminate access. Yeah, I see this forty five acres as a way to end that question. Now, I suppose you know, you could go forward with an annexation and the planning commission, council could approve something with further stubs west or south or wherever. But you know, those stubs have been there a long time and people ask, well, what do we, you know, where do they lead to or where do they go and what could happen? If you want to put an end to that question, you you know, we just as a community need to focus on a development that closes within itself, so to speak. But I'm in favor of the opportunity and I'm happy to you know, go in many directions with this. I do think that Councilmember Sarah Farrow's suggestion about getting public input is a good one. I do respect what Mr. Lutton said about not doing it before we have all the information. I mean, we can't have a public meeting and not know the answer to the question about the capacity studies. I mean, we just, we can't do that. And we just get beat up in front of everybody. You know, they'd say, well, it would be premature. All right, those are kind of my thoughts as it relates to the project update. Where do we go? And, you know, I do like the idea, but. Yes, sir.
Mayor and Jamie are both difficult to hear despite using microphones.
Oh. Okay, sorry. I think my button's on. The green light's on, the button's on?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, we'll try to do better. Thank you. Zach?
I'll start with a couple of small questions. When we sent the folks out on these studies of water and wastewater, did we have a return by date or we just say, here, take our money and come back sometime in the future?
I believe that there were proposed schedules in their proposal.
Are we within that or outside of that?
I'd have to take a look at F and Vs. But I know OHMs were still within it. I mean, their return by date was July twenty twenty four, so.
All right, on for the opining. I feel for Mr. Lutton and the team. If you're looking for a logical, well-defined process, perhaps local government is a good place to seek it. That being said, it is difficult to provide clear guidance without knowing how it would affect the infrastructure. From my experience in planning, this type of, we do need more housing. But we also need to make decisions that ensure the financial sustainability of the city going forward. When I've done the math on what it costs to maintain roads for developments of this density based on number of units and the road length, it's tremendous. It's probably, well, for inflation now, it's probably in the order of seven hundred to eight hundred dollars a year per unit. That's a lot. That means that this type of development with this type of density will not contribute to the overall financial stability of the city in the future. We'll get a sugar rush when we bring stuff on initially and the permits and that stuff. And I don't see a path where SIO Township is happy with it in any way, shape, and form. They want the whole thing to be what it is now. If I had a magic wand, I would like to see the majority of the site developed for variety of housing with ecological sites preserved and the frontage along Baker preserved with its view shed as to the extent possible. That's it.
So you're content to wait a little bit before? I mean, to get the two studies, is that?
Yep, well, one, it's a discussion item on this agenda, so I'm not sure if that's a major rule or minor rule. We don't have enough information to say we have the capacity to support it. And if we commit to accepting it, we commit to developing at whatever densities. And that could be a substantial investment that we have just signed the lease for.
Jamie, so now, Joe?
Joe? So part of what we had meetings over the course of the summer and I can't remember what date it was that we met. Sam and I met with Mr. Lutton.
November eighth.
Pardon?
November eighth.
November, okay, so it was about a month ago. And at that time, the information that was in the last council packet, that's, it was in the last meeting, right? That information, that was the first time that we saw that. Sometime around that point, SIO Township did their resolution. It kind of makes the subcommittee a moot point because there's nobody to meet with anymore from SIO Township. So I was expecting that with those design documents coming forward, that part of the discussion would be, is that, does that is the difference in the potential for the housing stock something that council wanted to see and hear more about or thinks would be beneficial? As we've been talking about some other items, specifically thirty forty five broad and Pelham, one of the things that's been, that has come up is, you know, that some of the feedback was, the public says, the public is saying now that they don't agree with this particular land usage or how we're moving forward on this. And I understand that. We get that kind of feedback on projects. But we make those decisions in a large part when we set up the land and when we zone the land. And so I don't agree that this is too soon to have the public input because frankly, if the only public input we get is we don't want to annex additional land, that's the feedback or the feeling that we get. Then, you know, the answer could be no without waiting for the water or the sewer or anything else. But we also heard from a lot of people, a lot of people who said, we need more housing that's affordable. Not necessarily that we need more housing, period, but that we need more housing that's affordable. And I thought some of the layouts had some potential that it could go in that direction. So I would say, I will say that if we were voting on it tonight, I would vote no. As far as the annexation goes, I would vote to not annexing the land. In going through this process, I have been trying to get to a point where I say, I think this is a benefit to the city. I'm looking for it. How is it a benefit? How do I believe that it'll benefit? And how will it be something that you can point to and say, this is good for the city because X, Y, and Z? I don't think that I do understand how proposition A works and Headley works and that slow growth and adding in some, adding in properties and building does increase the tax base. I do have the same concerns that Councilmember Michelle's pointed out. I think from a roads millage, we're probably in a negative because we all the time are taking money from federal funds or other areas outside of our millage to work toward the streets. I think on the general side, it does help to some point. Obviously, we have fire and police services that are increasing in cost, so an expanding tax base would be helpful. But overall, to the city, we have other developments that we're working on. We're doing in-vil and we're doing a good job on it. And I think that that's, that's what we should be doing. I think as the urban center for this area of Washington County, we should be growing in, filling in the areas that we have. Things that would be or could be significant benefit to me would be if we did have a sixth well, I think that would be significant because while we do have water that we can meet all of our needs, like now, December, January, in the summertime, we know that we run low because of outdoor water. So it could be beneficial to have an additional well. Having that section of the city closed off, having those stubs addressed, I agree. And that frankly is why that's on there because if we don't go forward with the annexation, as far as I'm concerned, we should take those stubs out. We should do something else with that land. I don't, I don't have, there is no scenario where I would say, let's not do the annexation and houses get built down there and township, well, they would be potentially roads in the township would be attached to the city and the only way they could be accessed would be through the city. I don't think that's a good situation to have because it just means that we're going to have people using the roads that are not going to be paying for the roads. We're going to have to replace them, plus the traffic, I don't think it goes in. Also, I'm not sure about the conditional stuff that's there. As far as a conditional approval, I mean, if I was going to get to the point where I could vote yes, it would have to be a very solid in writing, in black and white, exactly what it is that's going to happen on the site. You know, and all the requirements and all the commitments and how it was all going to happen. We have had a litany of issues and it's not due to a particular builder or particular, you know, developer. We've had a lot of situations that the city has borne the brunt of through nobody's fault. We had in Westridge, when I moved in there in two thousand one, they were talking about being done with building out the neighborhood in two thousand five or two thousand six. And that was even before we had the Great Recession. But John Richards' building had an involuntary bankruptcy filed against him. The guy who did it ended up moving to Florida, so he couldn't lose his house because you can't take away somebody's house when you sue them back down there. And it basically closed construction in Westridge. And Westridge sat, and then the Great Recession came, and then it sat. And literally, we still have one lot. Here we are, twenty two, almost twenty three years later, we still have one lot that's left in Westridge. Not anybody's responsibility. Thankfully, when Westridge was put in, the roads were all put in, the infrastructure was all put in. It didn't have to be built out. You know, Dexter Crossing, we even, we went through a lot of the same thing. The back end Dexter Crossing got built out much later. We had a huge thing a long time ago about the condos. I mean, literally in two thousand three or so, two or three, we went through how many condos were going to be at Victoria Condos and then like fifteen percent of them got built, then nothing happened for a while, and they finally got built out. But at least two or three times, we went through that portion of the development over and over and over again because it was not well defined. And going forward, these agreements will likely outlast a lot of staff and a lot of council and a lot of us. They've got to be ironclad. So I understand contingencies. I understand moving ahead. I understand the sense of urgency from the applicant standpoint, but you know, this could be something that literally takes years, years to close out. And it could be, there could be other issues. We need to be, if we move forward, as sure as possible how to, how that's all going to happen and what the commitments are and understand what fallback there is. It's one thing to have a property that's in the city. It's another thing to have something that's outside that you're going to bring in. I think it takes a lot more diligence and care and consideration to get to be able to say yes. That is how I'm thinking about this and what I've been considering over the last few months.
So relative to your question about zoning, how would you suggest we get to that? Like, you know, this potential forty acres or forty five, whatever it is, how would, you implied that the other input on what the zoning should be? Elaborate on, what question are we asking?
Well,
How many houses do you want to see there? What kind of houses do you want to see there?
What's the density going to be? How many streets there's going to be? I mean, getting to, not a preliminary site proposal, but, you know, even it's not even enough, I don't think. It's enough to say it's going to be, you know, single-family houses or it's going to be multifamily. We somebody is coming to us and they're saying, we want to come into the city. I mean, I think our first question has to be, why? Why do you want to come into the city? What do you want to do? Show us what you're going to do and not, not just sketching it out. I mean, in detail. When we discussed, when those plans came in, one of the questions that we had back was, okay, so you talked about these houses that, you know, you're proposing and you're saying they could be affordable. Excellent question that Michelle, when we had some discussions, came up was, was, okay, what was the level of construction or the quality of construction for these homes? We didn't get an answer to that. The answer was very generic. It was, don't worry, we went through and did, it was, if I can remember the wording, it was something like level of construction that was appropriate for those homes or something like that. That's not good enough. As far as I'm concerned, we're the one that's saying, we're going to give you this land. We're going to give you access. We're going to give you the water. That's obviously worth something. If it wasn't, the applicant wouldn't be here. He'd just be doing it on his own. He wouldn't be coming here. He'd be going to SIO Township and building it through SIO Township, do whatever he wanted. He was going to do that. So, I mean, we have the right and we have the responsibility to the people in the city to ask those questions. And I'm just not, I just, I've not got, in a year, I've not gotten to the point from Of understanding and getting comfortable with. This proposal. It's just gotta be much more reassuring.
A few thoughts, very similar to what has been. Said, and in one thing, I'm. No, it is not. In one thing, I. I fully understand where the developer. Is standing in the process that they're going through. A couple of things for me came within this process. One has been that. It wasn't until November eighth meeting that we finally got some level of. Better idea of what the developer was thinking for this area. So in in some sense, and and for many times, we have been asked to move fast, move fast, make decisions. But it also has been, it has not been easy to even get to the plans that were included in our previous. Council packet that we had in November eighth discussion. For me, there are a few things. Around it. One is that. First and foremost, I think about. The developments that are within our city limit. And so being able to support those. And with that is our relationship with SIO. In their resolution, as it was mentioned, they say this, this is not meeting their goals. In the subcommittee meeting, they said. A few times that if we are. Interested in this, that they would be interested to have a conversation. And we we went back with them to say. No, if this is a mutual interest. You know, as as it says in our master plan. So there are some things there as well. I have to say, I appreciate that at least this topic has opened. Conversations between us and SIO, so that has been nice. But for me is. I do believe that we. Should look at that capacity. That capacity is important because. First and foremost, we need to make sure that we can support what is planned already within our city and. Are the developments that we are thinking within our city? So for me, having a conditional. Move or conditional yes. It it it's the same thing. We are waiting for that information, whether we decide that that information, that this is something that is. We are moving forward or not, or if it is not, it's. The the conditional does does not make sense, and I do want to see that that study. I agree that. A well would be a good benefit. For Dexter. I can't vote on this based on. We potentially have a well. So I think that's an important study, and I think at the same time, hand in hand, the the water and sewer study is is an important thing because. Even if our water and sewer comes and says we can fully support that. Still, we know that we we should have something that benefits the city of Dexter. And that benefit, there there are a lot of things on the roads and things that are expenses for the city, so well. It can be a solid benefit if we go to to our residents and say, hey, there is a potential or there is a well. Not a potential, there is a well support there. I think in in some sense, if we wait for those studies, I know it is not something that the. Mister London wants to hear. But at least it gives us a better informed decision. Than we tonight are sitting here, or at least for me tonight with what I have at front of me. This is a no. But that those studies can can change that. From the perspective of the plan. I liked what I saw on November eighth in terms of the design and such. So I I that, I think it's if everything moves. Promising and and. With. Well, and the capacity, I could see that as a good addition to our city. But also I wanted at the same time to make sure that we keep our relationship with SIO as well. My two cents.
So just so I'm clear, what did you guys receive again on the eighth? If I go back to the packet from the twenty-seventh a little bit, what did you guys get on the on the eighth again?
The different layouts that included. I think the first one was essentially an extension Dexter Crossing. I think it was down to the seventy-five lots because the well site was added in. And then there was, I wanna say there was two other layouts. One was with. An extension of Dexter Crossing type houses, the other side was condos, and then the last was basically. Some one, some standalone, I think they were condos, and then others that were. Four and five complexes with townhouses. So there was a variety of, there was really. Three different types of housing stock and it was mixed together in different ways in a couple of different layouts. And all of them had the one site noted as the well site as well. Which I, which is all the stuff that was in the packet, the last packet, that was in words, it's actually.
Do you have the last packet with you?
I've got the written portion, I don't have the drawings.
So one of the questions I had that. On page two forty. Five and six and seven. Or last packet, there were some pictures of of a house or a home.
Oh, you're talking about the color drawn, it looks like wood and stone and.
Stone and garages and there's like you're seeing a couple of different angles of something, what is, what is?
Rendering of the mini camps.
Okay, that goes with the many hands part. Tom, welcome. It was, it followed the picture of many hands, I wondered, but it wasn't clear.
Yeah, good evening, Council. Joe, your memory is very good. We did present some plans for. Alternatives and options with regard to the specific annexation request that did have the housing. Types that we, Joe had mentioned, we had single-family lots, we had some. More, some units that were more like townhouses, we had some units that had ranches on the ends with towns. Middle, and then we had some units, buildings that indicated all ranch units, similar to what we've seen. Here at the Cedars of Dexter, maybe. So we had, we shared that information, we shared information about what the well would look like, what the impact of an isolation. For that well would be, we shared information on trip generation for each of the different concepts and from a single-family perspective. We shared information about previous agreements that had been made between this property and the city that. gave indications of how many REUs and from a water wastewater perspective. That were gonna be handled at that site, which suggests that the conveyance through from this property. Through Dexter Crossings would have been accounted for. So with that information, we had a good discussion about the existing condition. That we had submitted, so the plans we submitted, so this is. Over the course of my career, the first time in an annexation we've ever been. Asked to prepare plans to submit for an annexation, we usually don't do that. My first go around on planning commission, you know, we were advised by planning consultants that you don't wanna see plans with annexation requests. You just wanna go through and have the annexation request and have it stand on the merits and the benefits and so on, so. The first submittal that we had given you does have a set of plans which depicts the single-family development, which is clustered in nature. And the open areas of the fallow fields of the forty-five acres we're talking about. We developed our basement, you know, having completed wetland surveys, mapping. Tree surveys and mapping and so on, so a lot of the things that it's been asked of are included. And and with that original submittal, so. What we had submitted for the meeting on the eighth, we're hopeful that we continue this discussion, we're able to share those things with the presentation. That we gave at that meeting. But there are alternatives and options, trip generation, all those kinds of things.
Okay, stuff that's not in the packet?
No, everything that was provided in the paperwork is detailed in the November twenty-second. Committee report. And it was provided in your packet.
And the many, yeah, the many hands concept that. Kerry and team, we met with SIO, we presented our preliminary view and concept, select concepts in there. With their renderings for their structures and so on.
I saw several land uses and the single-family development layouts and. Conceptual site data and floor plans and stuff, that that's what you're talking about? Was on your Midwestern Consulting plan sheets?
Yeah, our goal with that was to use building typologies that we've seen be successful here recently in other communities around the block.
Okay, that's what I got. I didn't see the trip stuff, but that's okay.
Bottom of the plans, it's it's. Just some basic trip generation paper, gives you a snapshot. It's not full-blown traffic stuff, but.
I might have missed that, I I've got the drawings, I just don't see the, okay.
On the bottom in the corner, along the sides.
And there's also a site analysis sheet in there where we begin some discussions about how the Dexter Crossing neighborhoods. Roadway layout tends to indicate that its western drive was developed. Thoughtfully more like a collector road, there's no driveways that access to it. Versus the western connection where there are. So those concepts play off of that, but eventually we'll get to.
So you'd like an opportunity to be able to present that to us, is that what I'm hearing? Like in a workshop, Tom?
I think.
More so than, I mean.
I think there's been a number of things that have been requested from us, from Council in discussion. A number of things Michelle's requested, I think we pulled that information together. And much like submitting a site plan, package of drawings, we submit, we receive comments, and then we address those. And we're kind of doing that piecemeal right now, we have a lot of the information together. And there's probably a time, I know when we met on November eighth, we talked about this discussion and then a time where we would be able to. You know, better present that information than anything else that comes up through discussion. Maybe because we've talked about, you know, you hear heard Dave explain here tonight that he's interested in advancing. Additional wells for the well opportunity and so on, so that's all been a lot of things that have been discussed. But not put in a packet with a response letter, you know, addressing them and turned in for everybody to have. You've gotten a piecemeal.
Hey, just a couple more comments. Prior to the November eighth meeting, we weren't asked to plan, we brought those to that meeting. I talked. Previous meeting, and in that November eighth meeting with the subcommittee. The pricing that we offered. Has a little bit of softness in it. But it was developed by a regional builder. To a standard, I don't have the specs, I know Joe wants the specs, but. To a standard that is being sold in our Washington County marketplace today. For which there is high demand. I know that the product we're talking about developing would have a great positive response from. The buying public. The second thing that. I I wanna say. Again, there's this chicken and egg thing going on. What Tom said is true, in his experience, he's never been asked for site plans effectively. As part of an annexation request. Those would come later through the planning commission process. It seems to me that Dexter needs. To do some studies of their own, do a financial study. I'm not ready to accept Zach's. Fear that this won't be economic for the city. There's all kinds of information and we're ready to interact with city staff and help you develop. Models to get the answers to some of these questions. We're going in circles and we need to the conditional approval. I don't, I'm not here tonight looking for an approval of the annexation. I'm looking, figure out what are all the facts, what are all the pieces of information that we can provide? Where you can develop, maybe in consultation with us. You're gonna wanna do your own financial study, you don't want me doing this. But let's get on with it. And use December and January to get somewhere, maybe we can move the utility. That is the water study, speed that up some. And let's try by springtime to have enough information. For all the public input hearing and tell the world. What could happen and what the zoning would be and what the mix of products looks like and so forth. Told you that it is my intent not to build these units. To sell them to a builder to be built. I'm happy to supply you the list of candidate companies that I'm talking about there, they are all our directable builders. I don't see any of them going bankrupt in our climate. And Joe, to your fears about the the Westbridge problem only years ago. There's a, if we work together, we can get. An informed decision, and that's all I wanna see happen, is let's work on it together and figure it out. We'll help in any way that we can.
So so when I, when I looked at this. Couple of weeks ago. To me, the. I I don't know how you explain what the annexation is without telling people some level of detail about what it is, so the site plans to me are helpful. Maybe I'm. In another. World in that time, but to me, they're helpful because they convey, they convey an. They convey an image or a vision of what the land would be used for, and I I these, if I'm looking at the right pages. These four different versions of. Single-family layout. Do exactly that. They describe, you know, how close relatively you think people would be to each other and. How much open space it would convey and where there would be to stormwater detention and. Where the well would go, it it answers a lot of questions, picture's worth a thousand words. I also think if you're gonna do an economic analysis, you have to have something which to base it on. That that ends up with miles of road or length of the water main or length of sewer or something, so. I don't know what other communities you've done annexation in, but. I think these are appropriate questions to be asking at least this time. I don't need much more detail than this, okay, the floor plan with the one bedroom and the, you know, it's excellent. I I mean, I think it answers exactly what the vision would be. I think to to me, the question would be to the community at large. What part of this do you like or not like? Okay, you know, you know, do you like the idea of of the multifamily condos more than the single-family homes? Do you like the idea that potentially it could be stubbed out? You know, those are the questions I would ask, but based upon a visual, if I if I was doing it. If I was seeking the input.
I'll disagree that it's not bad to have a concept and an understanding, especially with the project that is. Like a stool, there's three lights, there's the mini camps, there's the annexation, and there's the. The preservation pathways project. What I'm fearful of. Situation where we're getting into site plan level of detail for a lot of this information. And that would be very cost prohibitive, obviously, to do a site plan for each of these, but. If we could stay in the concept realm, I agree hundred percent that allows you to.
That's a better word. That's a better word.
Intigences and study things, um.
Well, and let, let me speak to the other, the, the other two legs of the stool. Okay, I, I like, I like. The fact that they would like, that they being Silh would like to have some level of trails and parkways on this property. I think it would be a huge asset adjacent to the city, no different than the trails and. Stuff that we have on the other sides of the property, whether it's Hudson Mills or the Trail to Chelsea. That's who we are, I think that fits very well within what we're trying to be as a, a community here in the middle of several townships. We have pathways leading out to those communities in many directions, that's our goal. The many hands part? That's off the table for me, I, I don't view it as any part of our consideration for me, I mean, what, what, what happens on that part, I. I think the many hands concept's a great concept, I hope that goes forward, I hope Silh embraces that. I think it's fantastic, it's definitely a need in the area, but I don't see this body as touching that in the discussion much more than I already have.
They're asking that you understand it's, that it's part of the overall project, this is what we're asking. Uh, I personally see it as a benefit with a child that has special needs, it will allow me to stay in this community, so there are other people. That live in this community that are looking to expand as a benefit. Is it the biggest benefit Dexter needs to look at? That's up to you and to Silh.
Yeah, I hear you, I hear you, I just meant that I don't feel like I should be interjecting. I like that it should go there or can go there, but I'm not looking to analyze it the same way as the other. Because it's not proposed for, you know, okay, that's what, that's the difference I was making. Joe, and then I'll come back to you, Dave.
And I'll add on to that. There is nothing, nothing at all that stops many hands from happening, regardless of what we do. That's completely on Mr. Lutton, that's not us. It's not our responsibility, it's in the township, it's not what we're doing. And if you, if you're telling me that there's something else, if you want to tell me what it is. That why you need to have the annexation that goes along with many hands, I'm all ears.
Do many hands as a social good. I believe we could develop that property or develop the proceeds. Doing something other than many hands. But we developed this three-pronged approach. We wanted to accomplish the social security that many hands represents, also maintains the rural character of the Baker Road and that drive. I'll come to the preservation piece in a minute. And the smaller annexations, which both propose seventeen. Addresses a screaming need in the marketplace for more important housing, I will remind you. The average sale price through September with extra school was a difference of five hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars. All of the pricing that I brought to the committee on November eighth ranges from two hundred to eighty-five thousand to three hundred and fifty thousand. And there's a little softness in there because of some of the unknown costs. The sewer water issues and the well issue. But we believe we can bring an awful lot of housing to this community. Below four hundred thousand, well below four hundred thousand. And our preservation. The comment in the resolution for the title. Saying this does not meet our open space and pathways goals, I believe is a specious position. I don't understand the politics that may have caused the group. We are working with the Silo Preservation Commission, they have now, this is new news, they have now received the evaluation of the land from the watershed hills. And they will be meeting this Thursday, we've applied for a hundred and five acres of preservation. And those hundred and five acres include ninety percent of all the natural features. Not counting tubable land as a natural feature, open space as a natural feature. All of the natural features practically are on the hundred and five acres that we are offering to Silo. And the remainder are left lands on the annexation piece that Tom Coburn and Midwest Consulting will protect. In our design for you. I'd like to say that I, say again, I'm not looking for a conditional approval. I'm looking for us to make the list, what are all the answers we need to get, and let's get busy. This, this is the most, using the word logical. This is the best growth opportunity for your city that I believe exists. We're not here to annex two hundred and forty acres, we're talking about lot size piece and to contribute in hundreds or a hundred plus. Units to the community at prices that middle-class people can afford to buy. Those school teachers can live in the alley teaching, considering. Getting excited, I'll calm down.
I apologize, I didn't hear the answer to my question, I said.
Understand, there is no answer to your question, you have to see the three pieces here and.
Why is it that the land has to be annexed in?
Because it needs water and sewer.
Why? Why can't you just put one house per acre like Silh allows?
Well, under the current plan, it would be difficult to bring the Baker Road. And do a Silh development. Again, there is no answer to your question, I can't answer your question. But you're not looking at the future of Dexter in what ten years or twenty years from now, it's gonna be important to you. And.
So Ju- Justin left the, the table here, but um. Is there an interest by council in understanding? Uh, maybe some of the numbers, some of the things that maybe Zach could enlighten? How he got to his numbers or is there an interest in, in understanding the financials a little better than we have now, and that might be one thing we don't have. I'm trying to understand what we do, I mean, I, I have no problem, I know we need to wait, we're not gonna get the water and wastewater stuff today. And I think the applicants indicated that if, in, in the spring, after we've had a chance to pull more information together. He understands our desire to have a public meeting. Um, Justin, do you think you could help put together some of the? The financial impacts of, you know, a scenario like this?
Yeah, I mean, we can, we can look at um, you know, potential revenue implications, um, the water and wastewater costs. Central water and wastewater revenue.
If you want to help.
That certainly does, and we could certainly help what the residential development would look like in values and SUVs and that kind of stuff.
Look, that's probably worthwhile, um, Zach and Jamie, I don't know who put your hand up first, both of you, you're free. Jamie, I'll go.
I was just gonna say, as part of that, I don't know if it's still on the table, but I would like, if we're crunching numbers like that, I would like to see a. Set of numbers for basically an extension of Dexter Crossing, Dexter Crossing market rate.
Also, in addition to these concepts.
I'm not necessarily interested in these concepts, I'm interested in.
Okay.
But if other people are.
Yeah, yeah, okay, well, no, that's, that's, that's important though.
Having to compare them, I mean, my, I'm not opposed to annexation of forty-five acres if there ends up being some net benefit to the community. I don't anticipate without, in the absence of additional information, support putting any additional density. Behind an existing single-family neighborhood, particularly when it, it would be density without connectivity. Trapping people in the back of the subdivision, um, I wouldn't support that.
Okay, so, so you're interested though in the, in the comparative use, similar lot size as to what's.
Right, so it's a cohesive.
So it's cohesive and looks, okay, that's fair, that's a good comment.
Plan like that was included with the annexation application, that was the original thing that we did, wanting to not be controversial. Simply were duplicating the sort of housing that already existed, like.
Okay. Yeah, no, nobody did anything wrong, I think it's just that we should, let's get.
Just make sure that doesn't get lost.
Yeah, let's get, well, let's get.
Cause you've done a lot and I appreciate that.
Yeah, the, the point is put the information out there that we're trying to understand, right? Zach?
Right, it's not going.
Sure.
Okay, so.
Thank you, um, I just wanna say that I appreciate the concept that was brought and um. I don't know, uh, uh, what other annexations you'll be a part of that you referenced, but it was especially in this case in, um, important because. Your request for annexation comes with basically having a plan that then is handed to a developer to develop, so. That annexation from you is with that in mind, so for us. It became an interest, we, we needed to know what we are. Going to approve or see, um, it wasn't just an annexation of, okay. I'm gonna annex, you please annex this land and then we sit at a table and discuss what would be. What is going to be there, you are asking the annexation with the plan approval, so then it goes to a developer that might refine it to a. Preliminary plan and such, but that's why for us the concept was important to have, and um, one more comment, um, I think. Uh, I appreciate what Jamie brought up, I, I think it would be great to see. Not only the numbers based on what has been proposed, but also what if we just do an extension of Dexter Crossing.
Okay, so there's a couple of different concepts there. Zach?
So, a couple of questions I'll raise, if it's the policy of this body that we will only consider. Annexation with the blessing of the community that's losing the, the territory. I, I, I think we're done now, cause Silh has given no indication that they have any interest in this in any way, shape and form. So if that's the policy that we're gonna do, perhaps we just ring up to Silh and say, hey, is there any way you're gonna like this? And if not, we follow the policy, we say it's done. The question about the, the numbers for the roads, so the experience I had very locally was when Hartman Farms went in Dexter Township, we went through the exercise of figuring out. The mile roads with their engineer and the township's engineer. We figured out what the estimated life of those roads were, what the estimated annual cost for maintenance of those roads were, and it came out at that time, this would have been. Two thousand fourteen-ish to be five hundred and eighty dollars per unit, per year. That was before COVID, so it's probably significantly higher than, than my off-the-cuff number, accounting for the inflation and the increased costs of concrete and asphalt since then. And for those who are looking for background into this, there's a lot of literature that has been established by Strong Towns, it's an outfit out of Minnesota. Charles Moran is the fellow who's been leading that. Locally in the state of Michigan, Richard Murphy with the Michigan Municipal League has done studies on property revenues. Income revenues based on different types of development patterns. It can be a relative, at this point, it can be a relatively simple exercise where we figure out center lane miles, sidewalk. The, the water infrastructure, the sewer infrastructure, it doesn't need to be down to the feet, it can be a really rough number. This one, it's very similar density to what Hartman Farms was. Compared to Dover or Alpine, something like that, additionally. The wastewater, there's gonna be two lift stations to support that, maybe three, those aren't easy to keep going, they require a lot of resources compared to just gravity. Or we're gonna do with pressure pipe, um, so those are very rough numbers that we can do now. That, to help aid whether or not it is fiscally sustainable.
So lot size of the Hartman Farms, I mean, I've just pulled up one, three quarters of an acre. How, how sensitive are those numbers to lot size, because Dexter Crossing lot sizes, I mean, we're less than a quarter.
So.
I don't know what the average is.
What, what was the, the site, I'm sorry?
So I've looked up Hartman Farm.
Where is it?
It's on Dexter Town Hall, uh, south of North Territorial.
Okay, they all, I'm sorry, I didn't.
They put me up bigger lots though, so.
Yeah, so there, there's some porkiness, that was an open space community development where the overall density is two, two acres per lot, they preserved a lot of open space. But with respect to the infrastructure, it was related to the number of u- units and the length of the road.
That's a huge one. Which would not fit Dexter.
No.
Okay, so you, you feel like you could, you could lead us through some preliminary look at the numbers, say the numbers?
Yeah, I, I think we can come up with a, with a lot.
Okay. Yes, Michelle?
No, go ahead.
My Michelle. So the one thing that's hanging out there, excuse me, and it kind of dovetails in a little bit with the way Zach just talked about. The mutual relationship or mutual agreement between Silh and the city. I don't disagree that if the council wants to go forward, potentially have a conversation with Silh. Asking them what pathway is there a pathway that they could see? That there could be a mutual agreement on the forty-five acre. If Joe's coming, everything else, that's outside, that Silh's gonna deal with that. And I understand Mr. Lutton's points, that he sees that they have a development. For us, so it's just the forty-five acres and it's maintaining a relationship. But before you think of it, I think you really need to determine what demonstration you want from this real estate. Dividing potential. We talk about the current location, the information that's available, and the location that's provided on that communication won't support any of that. So there has to be some study and find out the winner on the point. How do we want to address them? It does deserve to have some direct. Input on it and step into it.
I thought I heard him say he was. Prepared to drill in the winter.
Yes, I have.
So, I mean, I think, I think that's coming shortly is what I'm, what I'm understanding, but I think. I think, I think what, what we're, what he's trying to understand from us is. What parts of this are we interested in?
I'm encouraged by this conversation. Part of the most substantive conversation I've been part of with Dexter. Hey, once upon a time, we passed the master plan, we accept to say. Figure out if this is a positive for Dexter, and if it is, then the city would build a proposal. To take the Silh, I believe it's an economic issue for them, and there are other benefits for them in the. There are two-thirds of the three-pronged project. But rather than inviting them to come in and help you figure out what would work for them, I think we need to figure out what works for you and then. See if we may apply with Silh. I am prepared to offer a sweetener, and I've said this to the Silh Board and the Silh Preservation Commission. If the three-part plan is moving forward, I will donate back some of the value of the conservation piece. That's an economic benefit for Silh. Four twenty-five agreements, which is what hopefully this would end up being, would include other terms and conditions for Silh. You all will figure out what those initial terms in a proposal would be. We're not there yet, let's, let's do the fact finding, let's do the work, Zach's study, the utility studies, I'll start drilling. On the property regarding the community well. Let's get on.
Yeah, I, just, um, Zach, to your point, you know, I. I'm personally happy with the interaction we've had as a committee with the Silh Township. I don't know if the master plan. language is exactly what I'm thrilled with. And I don't think the intent was to necessarily have to get a hundred percent approval on something that we might think is in the best interest of the area or the community or our community in that language. I think we've worked cooperatively and I think we should continue to work cooperatively uh to the extent that they're willing to do that. They've sort of uh taken a position that they'd like to pause the conversation until we tell them whether or not we're interested. And I, you know, I'm I'm here saying that I'm interested. Okay, I think that this is the right size of development that we might want to think about for our long-term future. I'm not interested in two hundred and forty acres. I've said that from the beginning. I am interested in forty-five and and the the amount that could be added from that. That seems to fit better with us. And I think it will fit ultimately when we get the water and the wastewater capacity studies back as well. The type of housing? I could go a lot of different ways on that. And I'm I'm very thankful to hear the different comments tonight about what you're interested in, what the other council members are interested in. I think that's helpful dialogue. I think it's, I think if we continue to evaluate this, like it has been suggested tonight, and if you feel comfortable doing that, whether you need to get if you need to get F and V or O H M involved in some of that to get your numbers to where they are, then let us know what that is gonna be. So we can at least know what we're spending if we're going that direction. Whether that's a rough estimate or a formal, I'll leave to you. But you know, it's obvious that there are there is some still some questions up here, and that's our responsibility is to answer those questions. If, you know, if we don't want to do that, we should vote no and just put it behind us. But I'm not encouraging that. I think we should get the questions answered. I think we owe it to the community. I think we owe it to the uh the opportunity that's here. And then if there's enough of a benefit that we see enough to to reach out to SIO, we can do that again. But I don't want I don't want anybody to misconstrue that the the master plan language. I mean, we've tried to ask the question and get input from the neighboring township. You know, maybe that language needs to change a little bit. Maybe it's too, it's not meant to deter the thought process on this. Cause as Zach says, if the community, you know, we just asked one question. I mean, if we ask the community and they say, nope, we don't want you to do it. Are we done? I don't think that that's what that language in the master plan is meant to inhibit. So that's my thoughts. I think this is this is healthy evaluation. I I do, I am concerned about the time it takes. Do you have the bandwidth to do some of this?
Yeah, I'm not.
Okay.
I'm I'm not worried about
Okay.
the the time to put uh the information together.
Okay, all right, good, good. Thank you for saying that. Joe?
I'm gonna be more explicit on what, how and why I think this is being presented the way it's being presented. Really simple on the math. Forty-five acres, probably can't do forty-five homes on that forty-five acres under the township, probably something more like thirty-five. So if there's something like seventy-five to eighty lots that would go on there with water and sewer, a buildable lot in Dexter goes for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So forty houses, that's six million dollars, six million dollars difference by annexing into the city. So I understand completely how this entire big picture works. I understand completely taking less money from SIO for the land preservation. I understand completely being able to allow many hands to do what they're planning to do. And I don't believe that it's incumbent upon the city of Dexter and the residents of Dexter to convey that benefit. There is a benefit that should be conveyed to the city in some way, shape or form for this annexation. Because frankly, I mean, I prefer it stayed open also. I mean, I really, if 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 you said, Joe, how is it that you're, what would you do with this property if it was your property? Say, leave it vacant. I mean, there's no reason to do anything with it. That those forty houses or those seventy houses are not gonna address housing in Western Washtenaw County. You could build seven hundred houses in Washtenaw Washtenaw County and they'd all get sold. That's the way the marketing is. There was just a post today that somebody said, oh, I got a house in West Ridge. Somebody else said it'll be gone in no time. Don't even worry about listing it with the realtor. You'll have three or four people. And there was people on there that say, I'll take it. Let me know. I'll message. The this I I don't understand the hesitance with admitting to and owning the fact that the city of Dexter is enabling this process. Like I said, you can dedicate that land to SIO Township through the land preservation process. You can do the many hands project with or without the annexation. That is your option. This is not incumbent upon us. It sounds great to go to other people and say, hey, Dexter didn't let me to annex, so I can't do this and I can't do that. That's wrong. That's not what we're averaging. And that has to be owned. Okay? We here, us, live in and represent the people of the city. Right? We don't represent the people in SIO Township, me or you for that matter. You know, you come in and you said, this is what you want us to do. We don't get elected by you. It's very difficult to go through this process, and I'm trying really hard to figure out a way to get to yes. That's my objective. Figure out how there's a benefit for the city of Dexter in this. I need your help in that if I'm gonna get there, cause I'm not seen. And it's extremely frustrating.
Comments I want to give inclusion as well. There was zero communication with me regarding this committee process with SIO. This is the first meaningful conversation. I applaud you and I wanna work with you. And I will say, nobody is paying retail price of a hundred and fifty thousand a lot if they are the builder who is gonna build the homes. But uh you're make all your analysis that you started with. But we're here to work and see if this makes sense for Dexter. I respect your position. How do we get to finding the benefit? We'll start drilling, looking for wells as soon as we can arrange it. I'd like feedback from Michelle and Justin as they begin to do their work, get to conclusions. I'd like open communication between us. And we'll figure it out. We'll leave it yet to a list of benefits that works for these, or we will.
Tom, if um if you could, in the, I think there were four plan sheets that you gave us. Could you get us the centerline footage of?
Yep, there's a couple of things I can do. I can give you the behind footage of the roadway. I can give you the section of the roadway that we're suggesting.
Yep, that's on the plans.
Yeah, and sidewalk lines. Um, I will also give you the plans. There's kind of a conceptual layout for water and sanitary.
That'd be great.
Give you the length of that. The one thing I would ask though is, I was writing a note to Michelle here. If it's, if there's an opportunity to meet with, with Waylon?
Yeah, Waylon are.
Oh, Dan.
Are hydrologic engineers.
If it's okay, I'd like to have our, I'm not a well expert. I'd like to have our well people, well people meet with your well people and talk about what that means because, you know, um, the notion of three hundred and thirty gallons per minute was thrown out as a municipal well. I'm not, that might be for, yeah, if you need a municipal well, that's it. But are there other parameters like this well that a hundred gallons per minute can supplement the storage tower, those kind of things? I wanna understand what those parameters are below or before. Sit down with the well grower, you're, come on, make your plan.
I'll leave that to staff to coordinate if there's questions.
Yeah, well, we'll talk.
Justin, Michelle.
Yeah, we'll talk through with utilities and and our our experts.
Zach, anything?
Should also be consideration given to wellhead protection area. If we're gonna put the well in a spot that could cause uh activities with an established business in the industrial park to have to cease, that's something we ought to know before.
Yep. Okay, good discussion tonight. We've sort of given some direction to staff. Is there any council member that disagrees with the direction of doing to staff? Or ask staff to do? Not sure there's a motion required on under L one or M one. If that's the case, it seems like we've maybe headed towards a public meeting, but later on in the process? Are you okay with that? You you asked you asked for that. I don't think it's on the agenda. I thank you for coming and thank you for waiting uh two weeks. We had a late meeting at the last one and had to have you come back again. So appreciate your patience there. Welcome. Michelle, thanks. Okay, I think that puts us to uh L two under unfinished business, which was the uh consideration of a resolution to adopt ballot language relating to petitions for a charter amendment. I don't remember the meeting that we postponed this from, but I think it was an August meeting, maybe?
Yeah, Au- August twenty-eighth.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody that wants to do anything under L two? This is time. Or do we wanna wait a little bit? I guess I have some questions, but I don't know. It's a consideration. I also didn't know if somebody wanted to put a motion out there. Or if somebody wants to do a motion, I'm happy to just ask my questions.
I'm moved to adopt.
Resolution on page fifty?
Yeah, the res, I mean, I guess for purposes of discussion, the resolution on page fifteen.
It's all there too.
Okay, so for pur- purpose of discussion anyway, you're you're moving the resolution on page fifty that. Okay, and with with the idea, council.
So the resolution to adopt the ballot language relating to petitions for a charter amendment.
Would, okay.
With with the the insertion of ballot language as proposed?
Ah, got it. Um, yes.
Which is on page forty-seven?
On page forty-nine? On page forty-nine? I see forty-nine.
Yes.
Yes, correct. Right above the rest of that, yes. Middle of page forty-nine. Okay, is there a second to that? Okay, no second at this time, so motion fails. Let's let's have some discussion anyway, though, over here on the topic. Uh, Justin, remind me I know that the the date of the election that um you've suggested is for the November twenty-fourth or November twenty-twenty-four.
November twenty-four.
Election.
Yep.
Uh, what is the date that we would have to decide on the language to approve it to to be on the ballot?
So um.
Assuming the state had approved it, what is, assuming the state had approved the language?
Well, so 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 we 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 have to adopt the resolution for me to be able to submit the full package to the state.
Yep.
Um, the state has asked for ninety days uh to evaluate charter amendment petitions.
Okay.
The normal um proposal submittal date is, I think, early July. And so kind of backing from July, we'd be looking at March or April.
Remind me then, okay, so then, so what does the state tell us? The language is acceptable?
Correct. So so we we have to submit it to the governor and the attorney general's office.
Yep.
And the attorney general's office, you know, reviews it for you know, does it meet state law and and that sort of thing? Um, and then they make a recommendation to the governor that yes, this is something that people are allowed to vote on. The the governor ba- basically has has much limited, has much more limited power in her ability to evaluate whether or not it's acceptable. But um once we get feedback from the governor's office and um the attorney general's office that yes, you may move forward with this, then it gets submitted to um the county clerk's office.
Do we, do we vote to submit it to the concrete clerk's office?
No.
Or or it's automatically submitted to the concrete clerk?
So so i- if 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 you approve the resol- resolution, it gets submitted to the attorney general's office and governor's office. Once they sign off on it, it automatically goes to the to the county clerk's office.
And the state knows the date the county needs that from by?
Yes. Yeah, the 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 deadline to submit proposals to the county to be included on the ballot is a a hard, a a hard deadline. Correct.
Across the state?
Across the state.
Okay. Okay, so we have until, so what is the hard date? And then T minus ninety?
Yeah.
Or plus ninety or?
Yeah. I'd 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 have to look.
So I I'm with.
But but I wanna say it's it's early July.
Okay, okay. Sorry, Zach, I didn't see your hand.
So just for confirmation, in this case, it's an administrative role. We're just saying, yes, we received this. It had appropriate signatures here, correct?
So so the the this is a, so because the petition did not come with ballot language, it falls upon the city council to approve or to 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 essentially approve the ballot language in its form to be placed on the ballot. And essentially, city council is making that recommendation to the attorney general's office and the governor's office saying this is what we feel the the ballot language should be based on the petition that was submitted. They sign off on it and it goes on the ballot.
And difference between this and a a city council moved petition, you alluded to, the attorney general basically determines if it's constitutional legal. We couldn't adopt if if five thousand people, we want a charter amendment to prohibit Irish people from living in Dexter. Attorney general say, no, 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 you can't do that. That's the cases where the governor could say it's, can't do that. But because it's voter initiated, the governor has much less leeway with respect to whether or not it's good policy. So by example, city of Dexter or city of Detroit council proposed some amendments changed how city council is organized. The governor vetoed that because she didn't think it was good policy.
So so then not only are they, not only is the attorney general's office looking at uh constitutionality and legality, uh but also uh is what city council approved consistent with um what was submitted uh via the petition?
Um, and what's the penalty if if we piddle around and we don't meet the deadlines and it doesn't get on the next general election?
I couldn't tell you. I I think typically in that s- situation, um someone annex illegal action to compel compliance. At least that 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 has, that is my understanding of of these types of situations that have occurred in other communities.
I'm good, thank you. So on the off chance that somebody decides to withdraw the petition?
I, there 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 is no withdrawal of the of the petition.
No mechanism.
There's no mechanism to withdraw?
Be 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 because once, once the petitions have been submitted, it's not any one person's petition. It is the collective set of signatories petition.
Okay.
Is there something people are waiting for on this item? It's like the language you're gonna support and the resolution going to be different the next time we see this? Is it or are you just trying to play a calendar game? I'm just trying to understand what the what are you waiting for? If anybody is waiting?
Well. Joe, what's the hurry?
There isn't necessarily one. But we've had this on the agenda twice.
Yep.
It's a waste of time to have it on the agenda if we're not actually gonna do something about it.
Probably made progress from the last one to this one. Didn't have a ballot.
There 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 was ballot language last time.
I guess I'm not here to play games. I'm here to conduct city business. And this feels like a game. So that's why I asked the question.
Well, my suggestion would be to bring her back in February. We get Dan back for sure and Wop probably at the same time and they may have some thoughts on it too.
Joe? I don't know that it's necessarily important to do today. I don't know why I would assign a negative connotation to not moving forward with it tonight. It's not going to get in here any faster. Something we're going to have to do one way or the other eventually. I, if there's something to be gained, I could see where somebody could look at it and say you're playing the game, but there isn't. So I don't know why it would be assigned that type of characters, so. I think what Mayor Keough just said, neither, neither council member Schlauch or Hubbard are here. They should probably be here for that as well.
We certainly have a better chance of voting on it with more than five people going forward. Maybe not in the next three meetings with Dan gone, but my suggestion would be we postpone it to the first meeting in February. Or we're done. We don't know when it comes back. I'm happy to move on to M two also. Okay, M two is discussion of the bicentennial celebration.
Josh? All right. Hello, everyone. Have a good evening. So in front of you is the bicentennial celebration primarily part of the item. And keep things relatively short this time. I took a lot of the comments and questions that were asked by members of council last time and poured those along through H O. So just on that first page on page sixty one are a lot of the questions that were asked related to ticket pricing, looking at the kind of the scheduling, many things like the new operations. One big question, I just want Michelle to ask about covering the gap that we will not have to cover any revenue gap, which was a really good thing to hear. And things such as the generation, generator locations being able to be moved away as far as reasonably possible for the carnival, so. That's kind of the update since the last time that we had spoken. That's
So how many generators are we talking about? Just to stay on the generator question, Josh?
I'm not sure on the number of generators. I know on the math, excuse me, one second. I know that they call out one, oh, two different locations for the generators. I'm not sure if that is a cluster of generators or if that's, you know, a large generator. I could always find that out, but I know that there's two locations currently proposed where generators would be located.
But one of them is down near our looks like it's down near the Monument Park where we have the big green cabinet with electrical power. I'm assuming that that's sufficient?
Yeah, yeah, and we looked at one of the four of them. Absolutely.
Okay, and the other generator location is at the corner of Central and Fifth, it looks like, if I'm reading that right. Is that connected to anything or is that the plug-in or this is a gas powered? What is this?
I think it's just the generators that they bring along with the power of some of the larger pieces of equipment. Just because a lot of the generator, or a lot of the equipment that they utilize need a three-stage generators. So I know I think that'll be the majority of what they're using. And I'm not sure, I don't think that they're going to tap into our power for the rides and stuff. I believe it should be three-stage generators if they were.
It's all self-sufficient, so. So they got their own kind of power. And then they also, the reason why it fits in Central, my understanding, is because it's quite a decent size.
In the intersection. It looks like a big box.
I believe the, yeah, for that little spot, it was like the Himalaya, which is what they suggested for that. You're familiar with one that's up and down and around in circles.
Was there any thought to doing this over near thirty forty five Broad?
So in the initial planning, you know, as I mentioned in the last meeting as well, it started on name and went down to Central. We could look into investigating on Broad Street. I know that, you know, looking at that spot, less residential over there, so I could reach out to Mike and see if they believe that, you know, that could, you know, infrastructureally support the carnival. The one thing that kind of just looking at a kind of a bird's eye view over there is we tried to close a portion of probably Grand Street as well, just because the way we currently have it kind of going down Central, Central Street's a little bit wider. So it's a little bit more room for some of those larger rides. And then with kind of the length of the road, they're going to kind of stretch things down and kind of give that good walking or walkability with the carnival. Or that we would have to probably assess with Broad Street, potentially Grand.
I just think it's not in front of as many direct residents.
Well, the other thing too is, you know, talk about the shutdown?
Yeah, so one question I had thought of the last time after our last meeting is with shutdown, you know, they would close up at ten PM at night. And one thing that Mike said is that what they would do is as soon as they close down at ten PM, they basically work through the night, close down, pack up and move everything out. And so they would probably, you know, they'd start right at ten PM and they said that they're probably under around four AM or five AM that comes to break down.
I'm I'm not against necessarily the idea of the carnival, but I don't really like the location. I guess that's where I'm at. That's why I was suggesting the thirty forty five Broad.
I'm happy to explore that with which.
I don't know if that would work or not. What would I like? What, sorry, I just think it's, you know, I was just trying to think where is there open space that they could set up stuff? It's not directly in front of somebody's house and running a generator, you know, it's out more in the middle of, you could it just seems further away from more people and less less intrusives. I don't know. It's just my own thought. I'm not trying to kill this idea. I just think that Central's a lousy location for it.
I understand your thoughts, man. The thirty forty five Broad Street style for them, I think.
I know.
Per town rules.
It would certainly need some fencing and or some temporary fencing, you know, and such to steer people where you want them to go, but
What if you closed off? Pushing the brands, you know, then pushing the Broad Street.
Well, that's what I'm saying by thirty forty five. I mean, that whole area across the street, the whole, it's all vacant. It's, yeah, yeah. I mean, Central Street is nice because it's wide, right? I mean, we paved this beautiful roadway and wide because a lot of service area. I'm just thinking the equivalent area could be somewhere along that property. I realize there's telephone poles. That probably presents some challenges depending on layout, you know, the whole line down Broad. But there is the gravel parking lot next to it. There's, you know, I'm just thinking out loud.
I think with thirty forty five and probably, I would presume more or less it might be more parking for the trailer. So that might eliminate the hazards of putting, you know, ride or something, you know, oil. More like, you know, they park a semi trailer there, you know, that way they park it there, it's there and no one's really kind of maneuvering.
One of the things we also look at too is it's basically like their trucks and stuff. Once they set everything up, they're going to use that area too. It's like I don't want to say staging, because it's not staging, but they get it. Houses, small houses, they're going to be campers, plus their truck that carries it there. And then these private facilities. That was the point. Done.
I'm sorry, Zach.
So if we have members of the public on that site, there's a lot more securing the site than I think most folks are aware. There's a lot of hazardous things there. Also, we would have to, we would want to make sure that we're not violating any of the terms of the agreement we have with the DNR about putting things on there that could crack the concrete and allow water to get in and percolate throughout. I understand using it for parking of vehicles, but it also kind of makes me sad that this event will probably going to have more people downtown than any other event. We're going to have next to our park, a bunch of trailers and half-assembled things. That's, that's not a very good image to project to the world. Has the fellow been to town? Is he familiar with it?
Yes, he did a sidewalk with myself, Tim Kerr and Justin earlier. Earlier in November.
And we did walk over to Broad Street and thirty forty five Broad.
So one of the things that might be, and when I've spoken with folks who organize and lay out these carnivals is they have a very keen sense of sites that work, not just logistically to fit the things on, but for foot traffic. There are some spots that are great because it activates and pulls people around. There's some that are dead spots that sucks everyone away or no one goes there. So you may pose the question, where would you put it? Our criteria, we don't want to affect the streets as much as possible and we want to keep loud things away from people as much as possible. That could be a potential, just throw out there, where would you do it?
Well, I was, I was wondering if the the folks that own either the Legion or the Knights of Columbus might offer some space temporarily for like whatever was going to be on thirty forty five Broad, you know, I mean, not that far away. It's within visual sight and it's easy to go back and forth between. I don't know, just get along.
We can definitely go back to Mike and ask those questions.
Any other thoughts or feedback on M two? Okay, we'll move down to M three, discussion of public input sessions. Thanks, Josh, for your work on it. Discussion of the public input session for future of thirty forty five Broad Street development. Joe, you had asked that this
Yeah, same. Excuse me, same as the discussion before, just with common sale. Leading the project. And we've had people from the community ask about it and I, I don't know because I wasn't here for, you know, from a year ago to six years ago or seven years ago before that. What the engagement is during that time. The engagement I remember was quite a long time ago in the two thousand ten to twelve area, so I assume there might have been other input since then, but maybe, I mean, some other things have been brought forward. Talking more about a trailhead there, which I don't know if we discussed previously as part of the development of that area. So I just thought it would be an item to discuss having a public input session as well as I don't know if DDA would lead that or if city would lead that or condemnation or how that would be, but it just seemed like we've been working on the same project for the last a similar project for the last ten years and the community might have, viewpoints might have changed or opinions might have changed, like, might be the best use of that site or what might be more desirable from a public scene.
I think the DDA would be happy to be a part of that.
I can ask them. I'll ask them next week or when's our meeting, twenty first? Yeah, next week. Other thoughts?
Sure, yeah, I, as you all know, I'm a big proponent of public engagement. I think how public engagement is done does need to be carefully considered, especially when, as at least in my view, some might view that there's a track record of casting aside public input on hot topic items in recent years. So when you're in a situation where engagement has decreased because of lack of trust, I think you need to work extra hard to give people a reason to show up and to believe that the input they provide at that time is somehow going to be different than the input they provided at other times. And I think a helpful way to accomplish that is to bring in a third-party moderator for that discussion. I, maybe we had some maybe it was not public input, maybe it was just among council where I don't know if it was Meghan from Carlyle Wortman moderated something. I might even go further external to the city than that. I think if yeah, if there's going to be a conversation, I mean, I think we need to have a more detailed scope of what that would look like. I think various stakeholders need to be involved, whether it's reps from DDA, city council reps, downtown business owners, council residents, all residents. I don't want it to just be, hey, and I'm not saying that's what he was proposing, just to get ahead of it. I want it to be more than just come down here at nine o'clock on Saturday morning and tell us what you think of this property. Again, I'm not saying that's what we think it would be. Neutral, third-party moderator would be a must for me on any sort of public input we do on any topic.
I'm trying to think back when we first had the first public engagement sessions. I think they were led by all folks architects. What's that? Well. What's that? Well, no, I'm going even further before that. We had we had a professor from U of M and his, and his students, Peter Allen led a, led a series of concepts and ideas on the project that were then vetted by the people that came to listen. That was the initial.
Right.
That was, I'm not saying that's necessarily a perfect neutral party, but that's what it was initially on that, Jamie. That was the foundation of the ideas for condos or apartments and such. There was even a conversion talked about, I think, at one time in that process. Anyway, there was a whole bunch of stuff that was offered as ideas there. And then the, the ideas were supplemented with a professional paid staff that offered like ASTI. I remember being a part of that, I think. But I have to go back and look at it. Yeah.
But then we had, like you said, Sean, the GSR number one, he's now retired. But he liked assessing major public process. And when we did the next one after that, it had a lower amount of public involvement. And that's a series of four different one session.
Yeah, it seems like people are in favor of getting input, so let's figure out how to do it and bring back from the DDA for the next meeting or the one fella. I think our new business is concluded unless anybody has other comments. All good over there? Okay. We are down to non-arranged participation. Is there anyone that would like to speak on a non-arranged at the, towards the end of the agenda here? Is there anybody online that would like to speak on a non-arranged?
Is there anybody online that would like to speak on a non-arranged? Okay, we're down to council comments. Now I'll start with our student reps. Bonnie, you wanna lead us off, please?
Um, one interesting fact that I learned from Friday morning is that baseball is nine thirty was, it was composed the same year Dexter was founded because the Bicentennial is coming for that soon. And also there's a blood drive, so you have some, extra blood drawn by. It's open to everyone, so.
How late is it open?
Uh, it goes from eight to two. I know, yeah.
You get two hours of N H S service.
You can't, you can't impact the two hours of N H S service if you are in the National Honor Society, it's what it's called.
You, you don't have to donate blood for the full two hours, do you? That'd be exhausting.
Really, you can't replace donors when they don't give. People won't be there if you can't give as well.
Hey, thank you for the comments this evening.
Look, everyone, a good holiday, you're already having a good holiday, that's your, your chance. We're seeing everyone on the point seven. Yeah, I'm, it was a great honor to do, look forward to everyone, for everyone. And you wanna say that one fact is highly, that you saw all the numbers, one through N, N squared of infinity, and approximates about the high square root of six. Something I found out last week at the physical competition, protection, added in support, like, uh, cleaning two, oh, man, this, it's nice.
Nice. Joe?
The only thing is, for the women's field hockey team proclamation, and why she said she would be willing to write that up, I was guessing we don't wanna do it the next meeting, but possibly the first meeting in January?
Yeah, I, I already talked to the coach.
Oh, did you?
Yeah, and they're, they're looking at for, for meeting in January.
Great, okay. I don't, did not have anything else.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Zach?
Um, I wrote a bunch of stuff down here, sorry, while we're going through stuff so I could get it all at once. Let's see, I did check on the map Washina G I S information and it looks like those lights in front of Mug and Bops are within the right-of-way. Looks like the right-of-way actually goes to the very front of the canopy, so Okay, um, let's see, for future committee applications, when folks are getting appointed, it'd be nice to see their application materials. I know a lot of those folks were reapplying, but it's still, it'd be good to know who's on there. Uh, one of the things I did when I was providing staff support too is I also provided attendance. Someone may be great, but if they're only showing up to one meeting a year, that's kind of important to know. That's something I'd like to see in the future. Our council rules do require when someone speaks that they have to state their name and address. By FOIA rules, we, law, we can't require them to identify themselves to come in, in the meeting, but it does allow us to require them to identify themselves when they speak. So that's something we probably ought to be vetted a little bit cleaner on in the future. I would like to hear or have contact with the folks at Corman Farms if staff could, could make that connection. I believe there are ways that we could have made that annexation work for them that was fiscally responsible for them and beneficial for us. These little black wires will, someone will trip on those. I guarantee it's near the post, but someone will trip on those. I don't know what we have to do to make them safer, but I hope we do something before someone rips it down and donks their head. Let's see, for the stub streets, we probably ought to have a little better understanding how, how street permitting works. Those streets, and correct me if I'm wrong here, and staff can provide better information than I'm able to do here. Those are public streets that have been accepted by the city of Dexter and are owned by the city of Dexter. When streets are owned by the state of Michigan by M dot, M dot gets to set the terms of when you get a permit to access property, whether it be for single-family, duplex, commercial development, new road or any of that stuff. If it's a county road, the county gets determined the conditions of when a permit is issued or not. When it's a city road, we get to determine when or not a permit is, is issued and the terms of that. There is a concept in, in law, at least in the state of Michigan, that you have to issue a permit if it's the only way to get access to the property, even if it's in a really gross position where there's a turn and a hill and all that stuff. You have to find the least worst spot. In this case, when you look at the parcel map, the parcel that's immediately south of Dexter Crossing does not touch any other road. However, it is owned in joint control with other adjacent parcels that do go all the way to Baker by the, the owner. So there would be, there would be a case that if the, the property owner takes affirmative action to prevent access from this parcel to Baker, which there is currently access to, then you forfeited that right to be compelled to issue a permit. But I'm sure staff can provide some fancier stuff. My fun fact is in the state of Wyoming, the maximum distance you can annex from your corporate bounder, boundary in a year is seven miles. Think about that, seven miles. So imagine the things that would burn and catch down. The reason why is very context sensitive. In Wyoming, every drop of rain that falls from the heavens is owned by somebody. Someone owns that. For a while, you could not even put a rain barrel on the back of your house because someone owned the rain that hit your roof and went down. So if you want to develop your property in Wyoming for a house or whatever, you have to either have an existing well that's existed since the before times or you have to have connection to a municipal system. And you only get connected to the municipal system if you're in the boundary. So that was just very fun, different things to see how they do back there. That's all.
Thank you, Zach. Jamie?
Uh, I guess I was gonna keep things more lighthearted also. I was just gonna comment that I also helped with my high school blood drive and I was the moral support for people donating for the first time until I saw one too many bricks, you know, and I, I got woozy and I had to go sit down. So I hope that doesn't happen to you guys. Then the other thing, runners will appreciate this, that in terms of our making our way through our agenda, we definitely had negative splits. Although with Zach's council comment, it wasn't quite going that way. So anyways, I was impressed with the speed with which we got through the rest of our agenda at the beginning, so thank you.
Thank you.
No comment.
Okay. I will seek a motion for adjournment. Well, does anybody have any items to add to the proposed agenda items list? Zach?
Of course I do. Retractable bollards on Central Street. So for reasons I'll, I'll leave left behind, I've come into looking and research on these for various projects and they're actually a lot cheaper than what you would think they are. I think because we're setting, shutting down Central so frequently for public events, which is a good thing, we ought to have something more permanent and less janky looking than a bunch of barricades that sit up there for days after the event's done because that's the way it is. That'd be nice to get some ideas on that.
Thank you. Any others? Okay, I'll seek a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Moved by Alda.
A second.
Seconded by Griffin. Thanks, everybody, for your conversation tonight and attendance. We are adjourned at nine thirty-nine.